Motion by Sammy Pharaoh, is there a second?
I'll say.
I shall ask, thank you. Joe, any comments?
Um, on the, um. I think it's new business number two, yeah, M two. So when we went through the items, there were some that there was no motion. But. We, so I don't know if the. I'm torn on this, it's like, if you don't have a motion, then if you don't have anything minutes, but we do have discussion regularly reflected in minutes. And it would be good to reflect the fact that we did bring those up and state there was no motion made. For the time.
That could just be added parentheses by the bullets above.
And it is, so, so just, just, just generally, um. When it comes to, um, items that are primarily motion based, um, we typically exclude, um, discussion. But if council wants to, wants to add that in.
Yeah, I, I think what he's saying is just put no motion made.
Yeah, I would say that was an atypical. Entrance into motions and discussion, and so I think it's important to note that we did discuss all of those items. So that it's not just that we ignored the other ones and. Didn't, because we didn't make a motion, because that's not what happened. I just, in this particular case, I agree with Joe, I think it's an important distinction.
Any other comments, Joe?
No, thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay. Please call the vote to approve the meeting minutes with this small correction.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Hubbard, yes. Michelle's?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes, motion carries. Minutes are approved, thank you. We have no prearranged participation this evening. So we're down to non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience here present that would like to speak under non-arranged? Do we have anyone online that would like to speak this evening? If so, please use the raise hand feature to let us know. Gosh, I'm not seeing any, do you see? Okay. Hey, the record reflect. No non-arranged participation at this point? Does anybody have any conflicts of interest to declare? Seeing none, we'll hold a page two of the agenda to approval of the agenda. Uh, noting that the supplement contains the, um. Directed, uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Resolution and appropriate supporting documentation for the, uh, first public hearing on the military and administrative fee. Someone that would like to move the agenda? Joe?
Uh, move, approve the agenda with the addition of the items included in the supplement. With the corrected twenty-four, twenty-five resolution documentation on military and. It was the second part of.
Extension of their road closure?
Extension of the road.
Okay, so that'll become M three then, um. Extension of their road closure for Sunday, my third. Okay, so motion by Sam Pharaoh, is there a second?
Well, second.
Thanks, second by Hubbard. A discussion on the agenda. Zach?
Yeah, K four, I have a question which may lead to a correction in the resolution.
K four?
Yep.
Okay, so that'll become M four. I have a couple of questions on K five, but I'm gonna ask them under your report. Why?
So, the pro-fore extension for vice-essential. We just added that as them forty?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not taking school, but we do take my.
Perfect.
Sorry, I misunderstood, I thought we were putting that closure extension on the consent.
So it's M three. So there are, as we sit now, four things on the consent agenda. Got it, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other discussion on the agenda? Okay, please call the votes.
Oh, exactly, just wanted to clarify that under H one. It's still listed as consideration item, even though we just got it two and a half hours ago, the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Is that the intent with the motion with the agenda?
So, uh, the, the public hearing was, was posted correctly in, in the paper, um, and on the public hearings page of the website. So city council can proceed.
Yeah, I, I guess what I'm asking is, we just got this document. Two and a half hours ago. It's millions dollars budget, it's sixty pages, fifty-five pages. I don't know, it's, it's, we can have the public hearing, but I was just asking if everyone's still comfortable doing it as consideration.
I am, because we've seen most of this before. Couple times. Well.
I was just gonna point out that Zach. You yourself have said to me in the past that just because it's consideration item doesn't mean we have to. Go that route, so we can always. You know, we can always postpone if you feel strongly about it.
Okay, please call the vote to approve the agenda.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yep.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, we're down to our first public hearing, public hearing tonight. Um, that public hearing is on fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, military and administrative fee. I'm gonna open the public hearing and see if there's any public comment. Um, I will. Well, let's, let's start there. Uh, I'd like to open the public hearing at seven oh eight officially. Is there anyone either online or in the audience that would like to speak related to setting the military and administration fee? Okay, seeing none, I'm just going to read aloud that the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. General operating mileage is proposed to stay the same at ten point eight nine eight seven mils. Street fund mileage is supposed to stay the same at four point four zero seven five mils. And the public safety debt repayment mileage is proposed to be decreased to one point six eight six five mils. So still any? Is, is there any further comment from the public on the mileage rate and administration fee? The administration fee is still proposed at one percent, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, I'll close the public hearing at one, one point for seven oh nine. Council is invited if they wish to make a motion at this time. Joe?
Uh, move, we approved the resolution adoption of the fiscal year twenty-three, or twenty-four, twenty-five, military administration.
Okay, and that's the motion on page twenty-five or sixty-one of the packet. Is there a second?
I'll say again.
Second by Schlaf? Thank you, Gold. Discussion.
I'm sorry, what page of the packet is that on?
I'm sorry, it's in the supplement.
Oh, the supplement. Twenty-five of the supplement.
Right.
Okay, that's in the middle of the budget. Got it, thanks.
Seeing others, Jamie?
Uh. Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Now we're referring to the supplement, uh, page sixteen, under law enforcement, an additional five thousand dollars is included to add a second crossing guard location in light of the Dr. Community Schools plans to eliminate busing within the city. I'm just, I understand that, uh, the city. Was paid for crossing guards in the past, given that there's a decision that schools have made that's precipitating this need, is there a reason that we are fronting this cost and, uh?
It's the way the states are. Yeah, municipalities are required to pay for crossing guards. Unfortunately.
And do we know for sure that that's actually happening? I know there have been several public meetings where it stopped and, you know.
So, so, and, and all of the presentations or communication that I've received, it sounds like they're still planning to move forward with it. Um, it sounds like they've backed off of it a couple of times, um, and are still, you know, potentially trying to find alternatives. Um, but I think the, the alternatives are, you know, still to be seen.
Another question, page seventeen of the supplement. Noting the, the projected, uh, increase in the percentage of the total budget that we anticipate the fire department costs to be.
Mm-hmm.
Going from fifteen percent in fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty-one. Projecting up to twenty-four percent, so just about a quarter of the city's total budget in twenty-five, twenty-six. Is that typical? Municipality to be spending approximately a quarter of its budget on fire department.
Um. I haven't done a recent cost comparison, um, I think we'd have to, we'd have to do a full evaluation to answer that properly. Um. I know that, you know, over the last couple of years, the fire department has worked to play catch-up on a few things. Um. And, I mean, unfortunately, we are kind of at the mercy of the AFD and, and the fire department and. There, and the total budget that they set and our cost per run allocation. Um, each year.
Regarding the parks cost, uh, Josh, maybe you can remind me. Was the rehabilitation of eighty fifty Main Street? Impossible conversion into public restrooms? Actually discussed? At Parks and Rec? If my recollection is known.
I don't think we ever really went into specifically eighty-one, uh, eighty fifty Main Street, but I know that the conversation of restrooms has popped up from time to time whenever, you know, we get around budget time, I know. Especially with capital improvement, we've always, I feel like it, it comes up, but not maybe a specific location, but.
Right. I guess I'm not quite sure how to advocate for that commission with this budget because. You know, we've also been talking about the playground for a really long time, and I see that is. You know, shifted out even. Further, is it twenty-five, twenty-six? Fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and that big parks, north playground. Um. I think recommending bodies. Would generally like to be consulted when we're looking for a recommendation. And. When they're not, I don't think it sends the right message.
So from, from what I've, I've gathered from our work session meetings is that that's a council desired item. And while it's shown under parks, that is kind of a. The best place to attribute it. Even though it's not really a Parks and Rec Commission directed item.
Right. I just know, I mean, so sharing on behalf of the commission, which I think I can safely do. I just know there's a general sense of frustration in that what they're trying to do keeps getting delayed and delayed and delayed. And I understand there's competing priorities, and maybe this is typical in all municipalities, and I just don't think I'm doing my job as a liaison if I don't communicate that to you.
What?
Uh, okay, the first thing I want to say is directed at Justin, so. I might need to wait a second. Okay. Yeah. Thank you. I was having a hard time hearing. Person, maybe a personal problem, um, Justin, I would, two things, I would like to. I think Jamie's question is a good one about, um. Municipalities and how much the average is that is spent on. Fire. Um, I understand that we're in a, you know, a different situation with the inter-local agreement and the D F D and all of that stuff, but I think as we. Are navigating these increasing costs and we are also navigating our budgetary issues and. With the fire department. Um, I think it's a, it's a point that I would actually really like to see in writing, so that we may be able to. Look at that as an actual figure. And use it in our discussions as such. Um, going forward. Um. I guess that's it.
We can, we can run that analysis, thank you.
Other questions? Zach?
Could you go through, since we're on fire departments? Where the. Increased. Uh, number came from?
So, um. I don't have the spreadsheet in, in the supplement, but, um. In, uh, the work session packets, um, I provided a, a spreadsheet, um, during our budget discussions that showed. Um, where we have been the last few years and what the current year. Um. Uh, total budget is, uh, as approved for DAFD. And then an estimate on percentage of run allocation, uh, for the city. Uh, for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, and then essentially running averages. In terms of increases for this year and next.
It was used as the base budget, what it had been previously, or?
Correct.
Okay, so this is gonna be short then, because the chief has an intensive adding for full-time firefighters. Which alone adds four hundred thousand dollars to the budget, you divide it by three, that's a hundred and thirty-three thousand. Um, all in. Plus, we have a bunch of equipment that's starting to fall apart and not work anymore. So this is very rosy. Um. And, and we're gonna be, we're gonna be in the red on this. If, if the staff is hired in.
Yeah, so, um, if you, if you look on page thirty-four of the, uh, work of the, um, supplement. There, there is, um, around a hundred thousand dollars, um. Proposed for increases in each fiscal year.
Yeah, and I'm saying that should be closer to a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty. Based on bringing in four new full-time staff. And fire engines and fire trucks. Getting past their life. Uh, a, a couple of other questions, the salaries for the staff. The eighty to eighty-five thousand, fifty to sixty thousand, does that include the all-in cost? Does that include benefits? Where is that?
That, that was just salaries.
Where is that, the extra cost captured?
Uh, so those would be captured under. The treasure department. Page thirty-one and thirty-two of supplement.
And so what, what does the eighty to eighty-five translate to all in?
Um, well, I mean, if, if you're looking at, at just, um. The overall cost in, in the, in the treasure department. Um, it goes from a hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred projected for the current fiscal year that we're in. To three hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred for next fiscal year. And then it drops down to two hundred and twenty-eight thousand in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. So a difference of approximately a hundred thousand between the year, current fiscal year and. Um, the future projected twenty-five, twenty-six when, um, one staff member drops off.
All right, uh, the question of the Alpine on-street parking. It's budgeted in here, it's six hundred thousand out of local roads fund. My recollection is, we were told it would be three hundred and three hundred thousand and change.
Mm-hmm.
How did it get to six hundred thousand in the course of two weeks?
So the, the, the six hundred thousand was based on early estimates. So, it, it, it probably is closer to, to three to four hundred thousand, um, the six hundred thousand was, was conservative.
Should this be changed to match what we've been told more recently than?
You, you can if you'd like to, um, I mean. The. There is. At the end of the fiscal year, if we're three hundred thousand to the good. I don't see that as a bad thing.
Right, uh, last question, I've raised this before. There's a hundred fifty thousand to build. Out the, uh, restroom facility. Just by my. Back-of-the-hand calculations, it's, it's gonna be eighty-two hundred dollars a day to operate that. Paying staff to clean it, to close it, to put toilet paper in it. So conservatively, thirty-five thousand dollars, where would that come from?
Uh, so that would. May have to be included in future year, um, likely buildings and grounds. Uh, one-on-one, two-two-six, or, or, uh, two-six-five, or, um, the DDA might be able to contribute towards that.
Okay, I, I do have concern about. Building out a building that we don't know how we're gonna operate yet, uh, but that's just me. Okay, I'm done.
What? Thanks, um, I wasn't gonna say anything about this because I don't wanna. Come across as antagonistic to my fellow council people, but I feel like. Having been in this position, I wanna, I wanna just make a comment about. Recommending bodies and such, um. I was on a recommending body as a private citizen for four years before I was elected to this council, and I completely understand the frustrations of the ideas that you have on those. Recommending bodies and. You know, sometimes where they do or don't get to at this level. Um. And with specific. Note to the parks item. As somebody who's now sitting on this side of the table. Sometimes priorities shift based on opportunity, and real estate is something that is a wild card in terms of opportunity, we are sitting here in this. Building because of. That, basically. And we have this moment where we can do something for parks that they've been asking for for years and years and years and years. Way before this other priority that they're frustrated that may not happen. Right now. But it's still in the hopper. And it's hard as someone on this side of the table to ignore that opportunity, to try to make it happen more efficiently. In a way that's really gonna benefit the community immediately, um. And again, I'm not trying to be antagonistic, it's just. I feel like I have a unique experience. In terms of some of us sitting here at the table. To have been on both sides of that and. It's not black and white. That's all.
Thank you.
Yeah. I appreciate those comments, what, I, I mean, I think it's, it's, has something to do with the timing of, of when things happen, so. Parks also. Branded the money for the Mill Creek Trail Connector Path into Grandville. In maybe last, this fiscal year or last fiscal year?
Current fiscal year.
Current fiscal year. And now that's a trail that isn't going to even be completed in this fiscal year, because. The other party who is completing that trail is not getting to it at this point. So I think it's a matter of, you know, understanding priority shift, but understanding that. History has shown that parks. Will shift its priorities, and then even then. That's like, you know, the second half didn't come together. So it's okay, there was two hundred thousand, two hundred fifty thousand dollars that could have gone towards a playground and couldn't because that didn't get finished. Now we have these restrooms, and like, to your point, the restrooms aren't even in the park, and so it would have been good to get parks' feedback. Are you happy with restrooms adjacent to Monument Park? Would you rather prioritize them down by the trail? I think I've seen some public comment that. They would rather than be further down, you know, closer to the trail, so. I appreciate your comments, I also am the parks liaison, so I do want to advocate for them here. Uh. I have a question about Kentwood Place.
Wait, can I?
Age twenty-two of the packet.
She still has the floor.
Okay, but I wanna follow up on that, uh.
Has there been any approval for Kentwood Place?
I, I don't believe so. No.
So is it standard then to anticipate? It's talking about anticipated REUs for Kentwood Place.
Because it's in the hopper and. Having that number in their own way. Instead of that. Planning the system. And how we work.
And I think you have to remember also that this is a planning document. The budget is a planning tool, and we're, there may be things that we change as the, as the year goes on. But we're putting, the idea is to put funds in areas where you think they're. They're gonna be needed. The resource allocation can change if council wants to go a different direction, there can always be an amendment made. So not everything is set in stone just because it's in the budget. It's, it's an estimate, it's a best best estimate of some things.
And, and, and like, specifically to, 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 to that item of, of tap fee allocations, um, you'll notice that all of the REUs that are listed don't add up to, or. The, those REUs would, would be way more than what, what has been budgeted.
The amount doesn't add up to the number that is projected.
Right, I'm just trying to understand the decision as to what got in and what didn't, so we don't have thirty, forty-five broad here.
Correct, we, I mean, we, we, we don't have a final. Plan or. No, 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 nothing has been submitted.
Right.
But you're right, those are, those are potential REUs for future years.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, I guess I would also just say, and I can make a formal motion too. I would be more comfortable postponing, not to say that anything significantly is going to change, but. I, I would appreciate, maybe the public would appreciate more time just to digest the document. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to postpone just until our next meeting.
United States. You know, it's very easy to be an outpatient. If they have to have a test. Do the pending service. Either they have to walk the test, but we'll go out two weeks late.
Right. Military can be adopted separate from a budget document.
Well, and, and, and really, really, you're, you're, you're not adopting the budget tonight.
Yeah, the budget is, is two weeks from today.
Correct. The, the, the budget is formally adopted through the General Appropriations Act, which we typically do at the second meeting in June.
Okay, so this is just for the rate.
Yep, and the administration fee.
Thanks for clarifying.
Are you still making a motion to postpone?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, why did you want?
Yeah, just a couple of, um. Other things I wanna say. Um. About the recommending body thing. So when I was on ACH and Donna was, Donna Fisher was our council representative. Um, there were many things that council discussed that. Affected things that we had certain people on the committee I've been advocating for, for a long time, and. Donna, as that person came to us and said, this is what I'm hearing on council, this is the pushback we're getting, this is. So I really, I hope that you're doing that on parks, um. You, you know, I mean, it's not a perfect system, nothing's a perfect system, a, and, and, and again, I get back to opportunity. Yeah, in a perfect world, I would have loved for parks to bring something to us that we could have approved, but. Again, for me, this is a good opportunity. Um, and yeah, it's adjacent to a park, um, it's not the end of this discussion. And at the same time, with the topic of. Um, updating the park in Mill Creek that has been on their agenda. That already exists, okay, restaurants do not exist, so. We have many, many, many things on ACH, when I started, uh, what, twenty seventeen? There were people on ACH who were talking about doing a play to honor Catherine Dexter McCormick, that came up every year and every year and every year, and it was not something that. We ultimately followed through on, we're following through on it now. Some things just take longer than other things. And, um. I don't know, that's, I just, while I have the floor to say things like that, having been on both sides, I feel. Like. I need to say things like that.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further hands, I'm gonna call the vote to approve the. Uh, twenty twenty-four military and administration fee, or approve the resolution which sets the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five military administration fee. Please pull the vote.
Michelle's?
No.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Griffin?
No.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Motion carries. Our second public hearing, item H two. Is, um, related to the, um, setting of our fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five water, sewer, and rubbish rates. We do that via an ordinance. The city charter requires that rates for public utilities be set by an ordinance. And the public hearing was set back on May thirteenth for today. So similar to the last discussion, I'm gonna open the public hearing. At seven thirty-one. And ask if there's anyone in the audience or online that's here to speak related to the public. Um, utility rates that are proposed. Um utility rates that are proposed. Not seeing any hands in the audience. Is there anyone online that would like to speak? Please use the raise hand feature. Not seeing any hands go up there either, so um cover a minute. I will indicate that the uh the draft ordinance. Includes a five percent, a proposed five percent increase to water rates, proposed seven percent increase to sewer rates. With a ready-to-serve monthly fee for sewer of twelve forty-seven per thousand gallon charge of fifteen thirty-four. The water rates are ready to serve monthly fee of ten thirty-four. Is the first meter thousand gallon charge of four dollars and sixty-six cents per thousand gallons. Second meter charge of six dollars and thirty cents per thousand gallons. The rubbish rate. Is proposed at twenty-nine ninety-two per month. Commercial rubbish rate is contracted rate plus three percent. And then there are some uh extra strength surcharges and industrial cost recovery amounts that have been increased slightly as well. Is there a discussion by council or is, let me ask this, is there? Let me ask again, is there anybody that wants to comment from the public? On the proposed water sewer rates? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-two. And similar to the last item. Council's invited to make a motion to consider uh passing the ordinance if they wish. Anyone like to make a motion? Joe?
Move we approve the ordinance in the packet on page sixty-three, sixty-four. Uh rates as reviewed during the.
Thank you, is there a second? Dan, thank you. Special by council. What?
Uh, two things. Number one is ridiculous, and it's me, sometimes I am ridiculous. The water rates. I am a single female who. Does not use much water. There is no way, is there any precedent for offsetting that for someone like me? Because I feel like I pay the same amount every month, and I can't be the only one in this community like that. Who is very conservative with my utility usage. And I know I'm paying for more than what I use. Is there a precedent for that?
So, the. Concept behind the rates is that there's a a ready-to-serve fee, which applies evenly across across everybody. But then the per thousand gallon rate. Um is based on usage, so those who use more are charged more, those who use less are charged less. But. In the way that that the meter reads, I mean, if if you use, you know, ten gallons. I and Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I I don't believe you get charged until you hit that that thousand. Tip where 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 the meter goes from, you know, nine 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 to one thousand. But 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 until the next one, until it rolls over.
Okay, I guess the only reason I'm asking this, and maybe Tim, you and I can take this offline, so I have a better understanding of it, but like. I've never paid, my bill's been the exact same amount the entire time I've lived here. And I know there have been times where I've had house guests for longer than I would have liked to and like. There were times I know I've used less, I haven't been home, and so it's just, I wanna understand, and for people like me. I would like to be able to help them understand why I'm seeing the same amount every month when I know. I mean, again, let's take this offline. Um, the other thing. Maybe I forgot, cuz I got too into that. Oh, no. The other thing I wanna say about this is, you know, I feel like people have a lot of, the public. And, you know, myself obviously included. Have a lot of concerns about utility costs, and I hear a lot of stuff in the community about our water costs in particular, and whether or not it's founded is. You know, not the question, but. How do we communicate to the public why we need these increases?
You mean when you're having one-on-one conversations or?
Yeah, because I feel like there is a lot of, there I I hear or I see online or hear. In conversations with people, a lot of people thinking, oh, our water costs a lot of money, so here we are increasing it again. So how do we practically, like, in a way that. Is easy to understand justify what we're doing right now?
So. The, the. Wisdom that I've always heard is that either you increase it a small amount every year. Or you increase it fifty percent every couple of years. So, the fixed costs. Are going to go up every year.
And what are those?
The, the. Cost of wine replacement, the cost of our um. Material that we use to to treat the water.
Staff.
Kind of like a little staff staffing um.
I mean, some of this I know, I'm just really would like us to.
But but well, one of the biggest thing, especially on the sewer side and to 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 degree the water side as well. Is to Joe's point, bonds, so, you know. Thirty plus years ago, um the village took out bonds um in order to basically overhaul our sewer system. And to a degree, our water system. We're still paying on those bonds, and we will be paying on them for another ten years approximately until um. Twenty thirty, twenty thirty-two timeframe where we'll we'll they'll start falling off. And um at that point, we can reevaluate where we're at, but. On the sewer side, we're paying almost a million and and or. Eight hundred thousand or something like that in in just bond repayment, and we're gonna keep doing that for the next ten years. Um because thirty years ago, we needed uh, we needed to overhaul our system, and we had to. Um, per requirements from the state of Michigan.
Okay, thanks. I mean, you know, I don't have a problem with this because having. Been involved like this, I, you know, I understand enough about that to know i- is what we need to continue to be operational and give. The community what it needs, but I think that especially with something like this where people don't have a great understanding of it, it's always good to remind. Everybody. What goes into it and why we have to do this, so thank you.
The 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 other thing to share with them too is that I I feel like our staff has done and and hopefully will continue to do. Um a fantastic job at maintaining our system.
Yeah.
Um, you may see news about other communities that let things go, don't increase their rates, don't. Do any work to their system, and then they end up with significant, significant cost increases. Um because they get to a point where they no longer have a choice and are forced into making the fixes that they could have been making all along.
Thank you.
Other questions, Zach? Not to be Debbie Downer, but uh this is actually probably. Below what we ought to pay, our our placement fund has largely been funded through new TAP fees. Like a sugar rush, which worked well, we had developers coming online, but we're hitting the end of that sugar rush. And the costs for maintenance would be the same when, well, cuz the system gets older. So, yep, Terry News. Okay, see, no further questions. Uh please call the vote to approve the ordinance that sets fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five water sewer and rubbish rates.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. There is one communication in the packet under I one, it's our meeting schedule, does anybody have any corrections or comments on the meeting calendar? Seeing none, I'll move into our first report this evening. Welcome, Tim, how are you? Our Public Services Superintendent?
How's everybody tonight?
Very good, News?
Two week packets in front of you guys, uh pack, sorry, forward, if there's any questions, I can field those now.
Congrats to Dustin on passing his stormwater test.
Zach?
Where is the manhole that you met to repair?
Just south of uh Grand Street. And you're talking about the.
Yeah, it's referenced in here, not with contract about manhole repair.
Oh, yeah, so it's the one that's it's basically uh just south of the projects, maybe on Baker Road. There's a deal, they had asked about it before.
With the big one that threw the weight off my tires.
Probably.
Uh, I'm gonna ask again about the blinker today, when I went south on Baker Road. It was flashing when I turned onto Baker from Ann Arbor, and it was still flashing by the time I got to the roundabout. In my car during school traffic.
So I'm also rapid flashing Baker?
Yep, the RFB uh closest to the roundabout.
Okay, I'll figure. All right. I'll double check, but I just more like was talking to um. And who does our uh, signals stuff like this?
Yeah, Dan Dan Davridge.
Um indicated that if it. Something about, he'd sent me to comment about if we change the one, we have to change the model or something like that, cuz it's going, something like that. I did a double check and see, I don't want to give you any trouble, so, okay, thank you.
Wow. I don't mean to leave out Rob, who passed his S five water test, and I uh. Congratulations, and I wish him the best of luck on whatever the other results are.
So, yep, he also passes B five. Courtney had passed her S or D two, so that wasn't in there, but so she's waiting on her.
All right, congrats to everyone. And keep up the good work.
Jamie?
Yeah, I just wanna concur with Zach, what he said about the rapid flashing beacon, I also noticed the same. Thing the other day, you have an update in here, you power wash Monument Park gazebo, I know maybe a year ago, I had a resident reaching out to me just concerned about the state of our gazebo. And it was acknowledged that we do this routine maintenance on it, did you notice any other outstanding maintenance needs on the gazebo that would warrant? Anything more than power washing or what you have been doing?
No.
Minimum.
The the biggest thing is the birds are up there and created mess on below.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, they have babies in there, so I didn't.
What about the status of the roof and plant life growing on it?
So we 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 have had um a soft wash company come out and and clean clean the roof of the, this is a couple of years ago. Um but we 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 tried to do regular maintenance on the gazebo, so just um. Two, three years ago, we replaced the steps. Um last year, I think it was, we added the the railing, um the the accessible railing. Um so, yeah, I mean, if there's if there are things that people notice, I mean, we're happy to, we'd be to tackle them.
Uh, and then the swings down at Mill Creek Park North, I know I reached out to Justin and. This has been at least for a year or longer, they're very low to the ground, I don't know what options staff has to elevating those.
I'm gonna look more into it, but Rob, actually, it's ironic, cuz then when you gave that email, Rob was taking his kid there. The eighty-four and six-year-old as, it's perfect for them, but the three-year-old is actually too high. So, I mean, it's something.
I find that so hard to believe.
No, no, I.
Based on the age of my children.
I wasn't in there, like I said, and I know that uh that one of the uh workers, Jake, said that they do leave them in an angle a little bit. To keep it so it tries to weigh itself off as far as like height wise for younger, little kids, having kids with. Um, it's something we can, I could sit down and ask about, but it's.
And and Rob, Robin Jake did also mention that that they're.
Offset, right?
Uh no, they're 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 not the same height or or offset.
Well, so I know there are a couple of bucket swings over to the right, those are very low. Even for an adult pushing a child in that swing is gonna hurt your back. Um, I don't know if there's a way to elevate even a couple, you know. We can go back and look, but they seem very low to me. Um even just compared to how they are at Community Park. There's not a standard.
I'll sit on just, maybe it's something we could do where we can, maybe if you wanted to.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. With DTE around town and all the digging and um. Did you, did we have any idea that they were doing this many properties, really? Okay. What do you, how do you think it's gonna work for restoration? I mean.
Well, they're just, I mean, they're going back and doing the restoration as it goes, and they're trying to get the. The bigger area, especially the downtown area to get ready for this, you know, upcoming bicentennial, but. I was on the phone with somebody the other day about it too, you know, I I said, just because you guys leave here five, six months from now, we got stuff that's sinking and stuff. You're coming back and replacing, they're right on board with it.
Okay, yeah, I would definitely have their have their number, cuz I've noticed with some of the stuff they're doing around town, they'll come in. And they'll have both sides of the street messed up, and they'll have topsoil on one side, they'll have. Beach sand, you know, it's like they come into this spot and they don't put topsoil everywhere, they've got a little bit here. So, and it being such a big project. Um, we'll see how this goes, but maybe we ought to reconsider um. That's a lot for you guys to try to to manage, I mean, as far as a punch list or anything else, I mean, I'm hoping it's gonna go well. But if it doesn't go well.
It's been hectic, you mean, just with the Mystic alone.
Right.
You know, I mean, just doing that, we've had crews, you know, two crews at one time before now, because it was so much, in fact, I had to hone it in and get a hold of Orby and. To get to the project manager, so he physically will now text me exactly where they're gonna be, so we can get ahead of this. But just when you called about Wellington, I had another call about Wellington again.
Right.
You know, I called Corby out and said, hey, you know, you got this whole area of Wellington, Kingsley, Bristol, that's getting done. Those houses, I mean, all the meters are outside.
Right.
And uh, so it was a screw up, they said, and I said, well, it's a huge one.
To follow up with that, I was out in Wellington, I had a resident come out that knew I was a council member and goes, why do we got all these flags out here?
Yeah.
And I'm like, I have no idea, so I called Tim and Tim's like, I have no idea.
Yeah, I have a Meyer too, and I was like, why are these here?
Right, so anyway, Tim followed up, he got a hold of whoever, and uh, he got straightened out, thank you, Tim.
They couldn't, couldn't make the cancellation of the Mystic, and that's why they went on, cuz I told them, this isn't only our time. You know, we have the US, the UIGSG, whatever it's called, the other people coming out of the market, all that stuff, that's just a way to time it up.
Right, so I noticed that there wasn't any water sewer, there was everybody else but water, so, but thank you, Tim.
Wow, just a quick follow-up on that, am I hearing you correctly that you do have. A timeline from DTE on where they're going to go back and fix the. Because I I only ask this because I have a neighbor who got that beach sand, and we were joking around the other day, it's like, oh, look, welcome to Corinne's Beach. Let's get out some beach chairs. And you know, she asks me when they're gonna come. Fix it, and if you have any sort of sense of a timeline, again, this is something we can take offline, but um.
Can you just reach out and give me some addresses, like?
Okay. Yep.
They're very receptive, and if I need something done right away, they're usually there, pretty cool.
Great, thank you.
How many more would you say they have to do, you know?
I looked at the map last week, we have a small meeting, look like they're probably three quarters of the way done. And I wanna say it was close to three hundred total, so. But I emphasized about the downtown.
My house is one of them, and the gentleman told me today that he's got sixty more, I believe.
Well, and that's, yeah, and that's, I mean, I'm right around, the one I'm talking about is right around the corner from you, obviously.
Well, it's a short-term thing, but it's a good investment.
Well, it's a good thing because.
Yeah.
They're doing, so.
I I'm just trying to get a handle on how to communicate it to people who are asking me.
Yeah, just give me a call, I don't, like I said, I got. I got more than one person calling, so.
All right.
DTE and Orby and project managers.
Thank you.
Laura, still yours?
Um, it's one, we got some storm fence up around the thirty-fourth, thirty forty-five Broad Street. We had a problem with the station last week, and that went good, but so, I think it looks better than what did, that's for sure. Um, and that was up there. Oh, and then unfortunately, there was a fire in the park, speaking of which, you know. The week before, the porta potties were vandalized, so I imagine it's probably the same people that did the same thing, so. But we're gonna work, this Justin, I don't know, that we'll get rid of everything, clean it all up.
Okay, any further questions for Tim? Thank you very much, sir. Next up is our community development manager, Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine, good evening, council, how's everyone?
Very good.
Excellent, okay, we've got my report in front of you, uh as well as the um corrections in the supplement, you have any questions for me?
I do that, Jamie?
Yeah, I have a question about the thirty forty-five broad. Uh script.
Mm-hmm.
That you have in there on the packet beginning on page seventy-one, for anybody following along. On page seventy-three. You, there is a priority articulated that says reasonable, does the plan allow a developer to make use of the DDA-owned property? In a way that generates a reasonable return on their investment? You, there is a priority articulated that says reasonable. Does the plan allow a developer to make use of the D D A owned property in a way that generates a reasonable return on their investment? I think it would be tremendously helpful if there was a half a sheet of paper, one sheet of paper that actually outlined what the investment in that property has been. And a timeline. In order for the public to evaluate whether they're what they're proposing. Would generate a reasonable return on that investment. Is something like that easy to put together for tomorrow?
Yeah.
I can put it together, have it ready for tomorrow, hopefully next. Um, um, it's. It's more of a. A thousand foot level kind of thing. Um, um, just based on. Pure logic, you know, if if um. If I'll try to give an example, let's say, excuse me. Um knowing the fact that there's a. Development is an expensive proposition. Um. If somebody were to say, well, I only like to see twenty units out there, that probably wouldn't generate enough. Um. That would it would not be worth a developer's time and it wouldn't be reasonable. Um opposite end, if a developer wanted a hundred fifty, we already know. That's not. It that it won't work, you can't. You can't do that work on the particular stuff.
I guess I just meant.
Jamie, I can go over that tomorrow.
What is, what has the investment?
I'll cover it on the order of magnitude that is sufficient for people to understand. How's that sound?
Uh and just to be clear, not not what number you think a re, I mean, if you have a number that you think a reasonable return would be, but I mean, just the number of what is the investment.
The cost, the cost of what we spent on the property. Yeah, yeah, the the, you know, the the one point three five million that we spent to buy the property.
Right.
The hundred and sixty thousand across the street, which is not on that property, but coming across the street.
Yes.
Yeah, I can get into that.
Uh and then. The that script. Mentions just a little bit down on that same page. How the city-owned parcel is subject to approval by city council and if sold must be approved by vote of the residents. Which my understanding is that's accurate. But then um. Later on.
Page on?
And so that seventy three.
Okay, sorry.
And then on seventy four under F two, it says. The city-owned parcel is subject to approval by city council and subject to referendum. So it seems like those should be saying the same thing. So it's not just that it's, I mean, it may well be subject to referendum, but it's.
Not subject to referendum, it should be, it should have said sale and I thought that that had been corrupted.
Right.
Um, right, which one was that? What number?
So that's two, um so page seventy three, so it's F two and a second bullet point.
Yeah, it shouldn't say subject to referendum, it should say subject to city.
To public vote or whatever.
Vote, correct.
Uh. And then I guess just, you know, I had reached out in a supplement and I asked because I know obviously there are lots of people who are interested in this project and hopefully many of them will be attending tomorrow. I was just intrigued to see detailed priorities and limitations. Defined, and so I asked. Staff, you know, who who generated these? And so just for sake of. Everybody being on the same page. The response was. Uh that staff and the city's planning consultants at Carlyle Warman Associates. Based on the purpose and intent of the Dexter D D A and their knowledge of the site and downtown redevelopment are the ones who. Defined the priorities and limitations for that. Thank you.
Other questions from Michelle? Anything to add to your report?
Uh no, just that the um uh sorry, yes, I have one thing.
Okay.
Uh street tree planting should begin next week. Um Mystic's been out, uh D P W's taken care of that and they also flagged the locations. Excuse me, so those trees will be planted next week. Um looking forward to seeing that happen. Um that's about it.
Okay, thank you very much. Give up the good work.
Thank you.
Are there any board commissioner or other reports as we pass through the J three area? Okay. Flip over to city manager of work, Justin.
Sure, so um just a couple of quick things. Um the first being one to highlight um. The folks that are planning the parade for the bicentennial, uh once it's been offered to the city council. Um for anyone who would be interested in walking the parade. On Saturday. Um if you're interested, please, you know, let us know, we can be kitchen details on. Um when and where.
Actually, it's somebody asked me today if we were gonna be participating in that, and I know I always say I love a parade and I haven't done it before, but I. You know, I was broken, my ankle was broken for part of that. I will be there if anyone else wants to be there. I would love to do that. I think it would be appropriate.
Um, we uh we received a little care package from our uh German sister city, Offenbach. Um they provided us with um. A hundred ninety million year old fossil. And a what amounts to a uh plein air painting uh of their the downtown area. Um those are available on the back table if anybody wants to wants to take a look. Um and we've been uh workshop in some ideas to uh that have to send back, we have a couple with uh with something big and splashy like a hundred ninety million year old. But uh we thought we might reach out to the historical society, maybe see if maybe they had something uh of of significant historical value to share. I've already uh uh mentioned the um fire in in Community Park. The uh. Poor toilet structure is is gone. Um we're gonna have to dismantle it, but it's it's fully destroyed. Um we're gonna be uh getting ready to start up on the August primary. Um we expect that ballots will start going out towards the end of June. And um. So you made any questions?
Jamie?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that in this supplement, uh would you printed the answers to some questions that were submitted by council members. My name is listed twice, so I'm. Page two, I think that should, those are questions from council member Michelle.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
That's okay.
All the bottom ones?
Yeah, right.
Thank you. See no further questions for Justin's? Um I don't have anything to add other than I'm uh. Excited about the bicentennial, finally been here a couple of weekends from now. Um. Happy birthday, everybody. Happy two hundred.
Can't believe it. We were talking about it for so, it feels like a hundred years ago when Justin and I were both on A C H and we were like, we need to start planning. Can't believe it's here.
Seems like we're just at one ninety nine. Okay, we um are there any council member reports? Okay, then we have four items on the consent agenda. Okay, one, two, three and five. Is there someone that would like to make a motion to approve them, please?
I will make that motion that we approve the four consideration items on the consent agenda. Can I call the last one four or are we still calling it five?
Just call K one, two.
Sorry. Uh one bills and payroll in the amount of hundred and sixty one thousand eight hundred seventy one dollars and eight cents. Two, award of payment crack seal services contract extension to K and B Ashville Seal Coating Inc. For the twenty twenty four crack seal program for an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars. Three, award of fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five senior services from Dexter Senior Center for an amount not to exceed forty five thousand dollars. And for. Uh consideration of the M L C C liquor license resolution for paint Dexter.
Yes, my question's on, it's okay. Is there a second? Sorry, second by Schlaft? Please call the vote to approve the four items on the consent agenda.
Schlaf?
Yeah.
Sammy Faro?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle's?
No.
Griffin?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We have no unfinished business. We're down to new business. A new business item M one is consideration of an application. For preliminary site plan and special land use for superior spaces. Proposed to be located at twenty five fifty eight Bishop Circle West. Someone that would like to make a motion to start the conversation? Joe?
Uh in consideration of the information provided by the applicant staff. C W A, O H M and D F P. Following a public hearing conducted by the planning commission on October second, twenty twenty three. City council finds the application for. Special land use permit. P S L U twenty three dash zero zero two for self-storage facility located at two five five eight Bishop Circle West. Is not compatible with the master plan, specifically the economic development goals to quote. Provide quality job producing economic development, specifically objective eight foster development, redevelopment and expansion within the city. Creating new employment and business opportunities. As it results in low and un, low employment will result in a very specific used building with limited alternative uses other than self-storage. And prevents future development of businesses and facilities which would further economic development. And the application and denies the application for special land use P L P S L U twenty three dash zero zero two. And the preliminary site plan P S P P twenty three dash zero zero two for superior spaces. Located at two five five eight Bishop Circle West. Updated application received February fifth, twenty twenty four revised site planned dated April twenty third, twenty twenty four. Site elevation rendering dated January twenty ninth, twenty twenty four and received February fifth, twenty twenty four. Second.
So by some of Pharaoh's. Second by Michelle's.
That's.
Is it possible there's somebody just copy that real quick? If you have to. Do I? Sorry, I wouldn't mean more than that.
More than one, right?
Yeah, it's.
Multiple, please.
What's that?
Multiple copies.
Yeah, that's what I said, but copies, so we can all read the pair. Okay. Um motion has been made, seconded, I'll turn over Michelle to give a brief introduction.
Okay, um I'll give a brief introduction and the applicant is here and he's uh getting to make a presentation to me this evening. So um the um. Um application is for preliminary site plan uh approval and approval of the special land use. Uh for superior spaces, applicant is Superior Storage Group LLC. The revised plan also construction of three new multi-tenant um industrial buildings, each with three units. And a self-storage facility that includes an office building and nine thirty foot by hundred and fifty foot storage buildings, which would provide. Three hundred and thirty eight self-storage units. The subject site is located at two five five eight Bishop Circle West. Um and in uh I'm sorry, property ID oh eight oh eight oh seven, one, two, five, oh, four, seven. And it is comprised of four individual lots, numbers nine, ten, eleven and twelve. The subject site is zoned R and D research and development, self-storage facilities are require special land use in the R and D district. Multi-tenant industrial buildings are permitted as a um permitted use in the R and D district. Um. Uh reserve the rest of the staff report that we have to make this presentation.
Okay. Um. Ryan, right?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Josh, you've got that loaded? Okay.
Good evening, council. My name is Ryan Joss. Um here on behalf of Superior Storage Group. Uh presenting Superior Spaces. This is a development that was recommended by the planning commission. Uh for city council approval. Or plus a special land use approval and preliminary site plan approved. So we're presenting a mixed use uh development. Uh we got two types of uses that we'll see. We're gonna look over what our spaces are not. Where our spaces are. Uh some typical items that are stored, we'll see some examples. So Superior Spaces will be offering two types of use. We have our flex spaces. Uh which cater to local area businesses. Along with storage spaces. Which serve local area residents. Door spaces are not. They're not rows and rows of campers and boat storage. Uh and they're also not moving supplies and rental trucks. Where our spaces are. Provides low traffic counts. High security. Will be clean and professional. Provide security to be around the clock, safety for all patrons. Our sites are regularly maintained. And our facilities are professionally managed and rules are enforced. The typical items that get stored. Our paper documents, pictures, instruments, clothing. Furniture, sporting goods, seasonal items, electronics. We've provided some renderings of a completed site. They show the uh flex spaces along with the storage spaces. How they can uh cooperate together. One example, uh it can actually be seen in the park itself. Uh the flex building uh that was built. Uh hard to see that at two one three five Bishop Circle. Along with a storage facility at uh Maple Village in Ann Arbor. At four one five North. Thank you.
So Michelle, go back to you then?
Yep, go back to me now.
Okay.
So um. When the planning commission recommended approval, there were some very specific conditions. Um. That they made their recommendation on, those are documented um. Those are documented on page one eleven and one twelve. Um the applicant. Um. Could have come to you back in May, but um asked not to so that he could go through his plan. Um revised to meet the planning commission's um concerns or conditions of approval before coming to you. Um and he's done that. Excuse me, based on the reviews that staff and our consultants um and D A F P have done. Um as it pertains to special land uses, um the criteria. Um. Planning commission felt that. Um all things could be met based on them meeting their um. Meeting the conditions of approval. Um I think there are a couple in here. Um. Excuse me. There might be some additional information. Um as it pertains to street trees. There is a um. To put the street trees in in the public right of way is um is a challenge in this particular location. There's an existing sanitary sewer that just sort of runs along the curb in the public right of way area. Um so the applicant is proposing nineteen trees on private on private property instead of in the right of way. Um. The. The. Action for. Uh council is to either accept a waiver of those um street crews for that reason or. Um it's staff's opinion that. Require the twenty one trees, keep them on. Private property because it helps to buffer especially that entrance coming in. Excuse me. Um. The compatibility with adjacent uses. Um. Um that was one that planning commission um staff and consultants really wrestled with as did the applicant. Um. The concern um to meet the criteria from from staff and the consultant's concern was it's the first thing you see at the. Coming into the park. Um and yes, there's a firm and yes, there is some landscaping, but. Um, and yes, there's a firm and yes, there is some landscaping, but, um, again, that additional. Street tree landscaping could help, and especially if it is, um, if they are allowed to be evergreens and conifers. Which normally wouldn't allow for street trees, if they're on private property, an exception could be made. The impact on the overall environment was, um, uh, the planning commission did determine it, um, shouldn't have any reason, like reasonable effect. Provided that the plan was revised, um, with the stormwater narrative, et cetera. Um, outlets per the city engineers review, those have been taken care of to this engineer satisfaction. In fact, all of the concerns that the engineer had, um, have been addressed on the result, I'm sorry, revised site plan. Graphic impact was not looked at as, or is not viewed by the planning commission as being something that would have a detrimental effect. On the industrial parks, in fact, it was cited as, um. Not being generated at overlapping times, um, and, um. My commission to determine, um, the applicant needed to submit a revised site plan that relocates. Proposed barrier-free parking poster to the leasing office, um, as cited by the engineer, that has been done to the satisfaction. Um, and overall, uh, city council. Needs to determine if the use meets all the criteria of the special, um, all the special land use criteria. Um, I've summarized, if you're prepared to take affirmative action, what the conditions of approval should be. And I can answer any questions that you might have.
You have a comment? Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, number two, councilman, my name is Kevin Folds. In return for the applicant, uh, and I would respect your request that you not reject this special land use approval request. Rather prove it and also approve the preliminary site plan. Uh, the applicant spent, uh, over a year and a half, uh, working on this property. Uh, and has worked through, uh, the entire, uh, process from, the starting point was. With the zoning ordinance, uh, had, uh, special, uh, that. Self-storage is permitted as a matter of right, application was made. City determined a mistake had been made, and the city council went through the process and enacted a special land use ordinance. Which the applicant had rigorously found, through four reviews of your outside planning consultant. And, uh, the RD and I-one districts are listed in page ten. Well, with your zoning ordinance as, uh, special land use only. It does say on page ten fourteen, I believe this is, and this is in the ordinance I downloaded today, that. Permit is a matter of right is as long as it does not about a residential district, uh, the. That process though, identified two districts, I want, and RD. There are no vacant RD sites, excuse me, there are no vacant I-one sites available for self-storage facility in the state of Dexter. There are vacant sites in the city's business park, in fact, the site that we're proposing has been vacant for thirty-five years. And when you enact an ordinance allowing for special land use approval, to deny this special land use approval. On the basis that the master plan is not further, well, then what we're saying is, well, we did, we enacted an ordinance, but the ordinance is meaningless. Because self-storage has the job generation characteristics it has. And you allowed it as a special land use, uh, item here, what you're really saying is because it doesn't have job generating characteristics. Consistent with item made of our, objective made of our master plan, we can't approve it. If that's the motion, I, I urge you to reject that motion. I would add that this site can be used as a matter of right for multi-unit tenant buildings. And approximately half the site is being proposed for that, they're, they're permitted as a matter of right. No one's objected to the job generating characteristics of those flex space buildings. Uh, they're objecting to the self-storage, what the planning commission found was that the blend of those two uses satisfied your master plan. I think that's correct, it's correct because otherwise, why have a special land use approval, why allow self-storage as at all? Because you're really saying self-storage is just are not allowed in this town, there are no I-one, uh, sites available. The largest I-one sites are public municipal sites that are used in it. And the RD sites that are available are in your park. Sites that have been vacant for decades, for which we're proposing to put to inappropriate. And valuable use for this community, a community that will, they have a use that will benefit residents in the city of Dexter. And. Will allow as well those multi-unit spaces, those flex spaces to be used as job generators for the good of the community. So I would again respectfully ask that you, uh, not approve the motion that's on the table. And rather approve this special land use in this request for preliminary site plan, we're available to ask any question to make it.
Does council have any questions for the applicant? Zach?
Uh, they mentioned job generation, how much jobs would be generated solely by the self-storage use?
So. There's, you know. Not only the jobs that will be seen from management positions. Uh, there's also many maintenance, uh, positions that'll, uh, take lines. Landscaping, snow, the likes. So, as far as payroll goes, those won't be seen on payroll. But those are jobs that are continued and created. Um, as far as payroll goes, we're looking at two to three employees.
Um, the site, as I recall, does not have any fencing around it, how will it be controlled? And prevented from becoming an attractive nuisance to folks who want, want to break in? Is it gonna be one of those two to three people on site at all times?
There's not a twenty-four-hour security?
The planning commission did not want to fence around the entire facility, if, as my recollection was, the applicant had proposed that in the very initial. Uh, plan that came through, and the commission did not want to fence.
Uh, how will, without the fence, there is the gate there, how will folks be prevented from accessing units if they wanted to park on the road and. Trench through the landscaping?
Is there, I guess I'll ask a question back, is there a lot of crime in that park?
Well, so I work as a planner in all the communities I've gone in that have self-storage units, especially the ones that have the little cards you can get twenty-four hours a day. I have heard from every single one of those communities, the folks that live next to them, that there's access at eleven, at one, at two, at night. And that it is disturbing to folks in the area, whether or not there's crime, there's, there's activities there.
Yeah, I mean, I've never had a problem putting in a fence, um, but as Michelle stated, the planning commission saw otherwise.
Again, if there is a modification to the, um, recommendation of the planning mission, in this case offense. You could, you could make that a requirement of the preliminary site plan and the special.
The, these buildings, the self-storage buildings, I'm talking about those because they're the special land use, not the permitted use. They have a substantially slower, lower slope than the rest of the buildings on the site. Why aren't they designed to be similar in appearance? I mean, I know the facade materials are proposed to be the same, but this, this building is giving me. Leaving railing on M-seventy-two going into an unzoned township, the cheapest buildings that they can put storage in.
Yeah, so I heard that comment last council and, uh, drove around the parks. That is exactly what's in the park. There's multiple low-fish cable roads, all metal construction. Um, so we are keeping in the design of the park, we conform in every way. That is laid out in the designs.
And this self-storage use will use substantially less water and sewer than typical manufacturing. Or other industrial use in this park, right? I'm done with questions.
Ryan, I have a question for you. I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Sean, good to see you again, we've talked before. Why not all flex space?
It is expensive to build and. Be quite frank, uh, it only generates so much income, um. If it would have been a profitable business venture, it would have earned. It is a difficult use to, uh, generate enough income to pay for those buildings. Because they're quite frankly expensive to build, um, we've built them. Plenty of times before, and, uh, they've always been a bit of a challenge. With this project, it will be offset by, uh, a use that is a little bit more profitable. And, uh, will create, uh, a better business ecosystem. For this parcel that are.
So, I think I mentioned this before to you, and I, I have a similar but different perspectives. My concern is also financial. I don't particularly think that the buildings we're building are enough taxable value for the property that's there.
Well, there's nothing there right now.
I know, and we haven't been able to control that, nor has anybody, because it was held under, the land was held privately for, since the park was built. And I agree, I agree with you.
Yeah, and.
But, but I mean, if I'm looking at it from the perspective that. That's a lot of land. With a very low. Net benefit. To the park. From, from a jobs and a taxable value perspective, which was the primary reason that park was set up.
So, uh, I'm bringing forth the jobs in the spaces for it with nine, like industrial spaces.
And how many, how many acres is this?
This is under seven acres, it's six-point-eighty-nine acres.
So it's like one-point-two people per acre of jobs?
Uh, we're looking at roughly three to four employees per space. Uh, along with the self-storage component. Let's say you have forty jobs there, again, not including groundskeeping, maintenance, security, uh, the like. Um, I, I think you're a little more on that, I think you're closer to about six employees.
Okay, sorry, I thought you were just saying nine, okay.
So, um. There's nine, uh, spaces that could be built out there, uh, out of the flex bill. Uh, as far as taxable value goes, I mean. We're proposing a brand-new facility, uh, it's made of high-end materials. Nothing about this is gonna be, uh, inexpensive, and quite frankly, it brings. Property taxes along with it, much better than it's been up until this point, so. I'm bringing a very complete project to the city, that develops all seven acres, or six-point-eighty-nine acres. That will be taxed at that.
I may have missed this, is this proposed to be phased?
Uh, there are two phases.
Which is the first phase?
First phase, uh, component is, uh, two, the flex buildings, and three of the storage. Um, but predominantly all the infrastructure that needs to go in will go in.
Yeah, I guess I would just, oh, say to y'all, I generally share the same concern. I mean, when I saw this coming through, it's, it's a lot of self-storage. I think I'd be more okay with it if it was less self-storage, some self-storage, but not so much. And also the orientation, I guess, I, my understanding is that when it first came to planning. It was oriented differently, so when you entered the park, you didn't see the self-storage, and then at some point it got flipped. But it, and now it still is this, so can you speak, I guess, to, what is the minimum number of self-storage? You could maintain on a site to do what it is that you want to do here, and. What is keeping you from presenting, um, I mean, even if you continued the three flex spaces around the corner and took out. You know, the four self-storage buildings in the front, so that self-storage was sort of in the courtyard of the six. Flex space buildings or five flex space buildings, did you consider other configurations and distributions and? Is it your minimum threshold?
Uh, those are great questions, so, uh, when we first came to council, uh. This was at the time when the ordinance, uh, was showing as permitted use. So my plan from the get-go, from the jump was, um, self-storage, uh. Think we had ten buildings right there off the entrance. Um, showing a fence, and, uh, there was no, uh, additional structures or use. As the ordinance changed. And I had to get more creative with our plan. That is where I got the idea of, um, adding some structures there. Of different use to, uh, bring forth jobs. The problem that the planning commission saw with that plan, though, was. This co-mingling of uses and how there's gonna be a negative impact, uh. With the two different, uh, users, and there was not going to be a sufficient way that we could. Do it all in that one space as such, so that's where I had to go back to the drawing board and think. How can? I have both components achieve both goals and essentially make everyone. Without too much co-mingling where there's interference with use. That's where this plan and, and, uh, fruition, um. Spent a lot of time, as did the engineer, on laying install options, and this is the best layout we came up with. One of the comments, quite honestly, was. They were concerned that they'd see self-storage from the, uh, western portion, and so that's where. It seemed best to create a moat, if you will, with, uh, flex buildings to the west. And then, you know, creating ample, uh, spring to the north, um, and that's kind of where we landed. Now, to answer, uh, some of your other questions, um, and one of the things I noticed is. Uh, the spaces are misconstrued, instead of three-hundred-and-thirty-eight spaces, it's actually. A two-hundred-and-ninety-eight spaces, or two-hundred-and-ninety-seven spaces, I went through and recounted that, um. We're, we're pretty much right on that fine thin line, though, of where we gotta be. Um, as, as far as keeping this all feasible.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Other questions for staff? Special? Joe, you made the motion?
Yep, um.
So in going through this, um, question is why do developers build self-storage? So real estate investors will tell you a lot of times they'll say it's three Ts, no tenants, no termites, no toilets. They're relatively cheap construction. Um, I literally have a friend in Lansing who had single-family rentals and sold those when he had problems with them and bought a store, a self-storage unit so that he could because that, that was exactly the reason he actually had a problem with a toilet that overflowed and destroyed a floor. So the the self-storage buildings, they do have electrical, obviously there's lighting, there's garage doors, but there's not significant plumbing, there's not significant electrical, isn't necessarily significant insulation. They're very low taxable value. So the result of that is it's going to be low taxable taxes on the buildings that are there. There's low employees, again, it's low cost. It's perfect for a developer because it's a low cost to build, to own and to ma- maintain. As the applicant just said, he needed the self-storage because that brought in more income for the overall project. So the question is, what's the downside? Before the Great Recession, self-storage was pretty much a ni- niche market. It was out there and was being used more often than not as a store value. Somebody would build a self-storage and they would use it as a way to just maintain the property and get some income off of it until development came along and it got built out and did something else with it. So but through the Great Recession, a lot of people started to notice that self-storage didn't have the same drop-off that other real estate did during the Great Recession and started looking into why. One of the biggest reasons is because the times that self-storage are used the most is when people are moving. Whenever they move, and I know of three people in the Dexter area that have gone off and used self-storage temporarily when they moved. That's when it thrives, when people move. What we have right now is the lowest inventory we've had in like forty years because people aren't moving. It's partly because mortgage rates, it's partly because of property values. Even seniors aren't downsizing, that's, that's supposed to be one of the big drivers, right? Seniors are going to downsize, they're going to need somewhere to put all their stuff. Except seniors aren't moving because they can't sell their houses and buy somewhere else. They can't afford somewhere else. They can't afford a new mortgage because the interest rates are higher and they can't afford it with the higher property rates. And we're even seeing it in Dexter, right? We're seeing it in, when we looked at the number of seniors that are at the senior center that are from the city. It's a, it's a very large number. And just people in general are not, we're not moving that much. And that's again, one majority of self, uh, self-storage gets used. So how do you tell if an area needs self-storage? There's a really pretty simple rule of thumb and it's how many square feet of self-storage is there in a community? And by going through and mapping them all out, you can go through as a developer and figure out pockets where there isn't enough self-storage and that there'll be a sufficient demand for it. But the unknown is what's going to be the future competition. Because if you figure out there's a spot where you can put self-storage because the numbers are low enough, then somebody else can too. So ideally, what you want is you want a barrier to entry in that area. You don't want it to be easy for people to build additional self-storage in that area. Problem is here, we don't have that. That can't mention one place on Maple, there's another one on Liberty, there's Pirates Cove down on Jackson Road. We have self-storage all over the place, surrounding Dexter. And the problem is when the amount of self-storage that's demanded by the area is exceeded by the supply, it's a race to the bottom. Because at that point, there's more self-storage than there are, is stuff to go into it. So you start cutting costs, you start cutting the rates, you start paying less. And the problem with doing it in the city versus doing it in townships is property in the city costs more than property in townships. Why? Because we have higher taxes, because we provide more services. We provide water, we provide sewer, we provide the ability for that property to be developed as an industrial site. Not the same way that you can do in the townships. The township doesn't have the infrastructure to be able to do and provide what our industrial park can provide. So the other problem is since the Great Recession, self-storage has been in huge boom. Like I said, a lot of people noticed that it was doing well. There have literally been, this is not an exaggeration, there have literally been millions of square feet of self-storage that have been built since in the last ten to fifteen years. So we have potentially high supply where additional supply is created. And we have potentially low demand because we don't have people moving. So what happens if the business doesn't do well? We had the same problem when we went through the Great Recession, had the problem with big boxes, we had the problem with car dealerships. We had the problem with banks with the, have drive-through. And what did those owners do? They went to the tax write-bureau and they got their taxes cut. So not only will we start off with a low tax base, but we have the potential that it could even lower in the future because there's no guarantee that it's going to be successful. And there's no way to repurpose these buildings to anything else besides self-storage. You can't use them for anything else. They don't have the plumbing, they don't have the electrical, they don't have the insulation. The industrial park was built for one thing. And that's to add tax base to the, and economic development and add jobs. And it's been a boon, boon for the vil- then village and now city. It literally helped the village survive. I mean, the dollars that came out of the LDFA were huge in the budget in the village. Unfortunately, we had a lot of people that bought properties and they've been holding them, they've been speculating on them. And so now someone comes along, says, I'll give you your price. But the problem is, is that the, the, the city is not getting the price that they were looking for in the tax base. We're getting a low tax base and low employment situation. So based on these reasons, ask for you to vote to deny the special use application as it fails the master plan goals of economic development and creating new employment.
Zach? Yeah, so in addition to our master plan, the twenty eighteen Economic Development Strategy Plan says that the average resident in Dexter has a house, has an income of eighty-eight thousand dollars. Um, and that our goal, the economic development strategy is to create a tech and lifestyle hub with small-town feel. The, the number of units on there, I do not believe helps with that. Uh, it doesn't further that goal. Um, it is relative, it's, it's like a brass long, it's, it's kind of sterile in what it brings to the community and what it brings to the park. Um, so I, I believe too, it is not compatible with our economic development plan. Um, the slope of the building of the roof is similar, but if you go through the park, almost all those buildings are ten to fifteen feet taller than what this is. It'll be very pronounced how short it is. So I don't believe it, it meets the compatibility with the adjacent uses. Um, I have concern about the impact on public facilities when the sewer and water system was built out for there. It was presumption that a certain amount of water used to help fund it. If we've got two fairly large parcels that are using almost no water and sewer, then those calculations are off. And our investment in that is, is not repaid. Um, with the number of units, I do have concern about attractive nuisance. Um, there are ways it can be addressed. It's, it's not shown in the site plan, but we have to vote on what's before us. Um, I could see a path where climate-controlled self-storage, where it's a building with multiple floors, that's a premium product compared to self-storage, you drive up, you throw it out of your trunk. Or a smaller project being a good fit, but this is such a significant portion of the industrial park that will be used up for this. Once it's developed, it's going to be very, very long, very hard before it becomes more productive. Uh, we do have properties where it is a permitted use, those may not be available now. But our job in zoning and planning is not to provide parcels that are easy to develop everywhere. Um, there's a lot of redevelopment, uh, where I work, there's a TGI Fridays that got purchased and there's a um, raising canes that's going there now. There's, you know, if, if there's enough demand to turn one of those industrial zone properties to flip it, then that's the demand. Um, so I I don't believe as this project is presented, the self-storage portion of it meets those criteria as I've outlined. That's all.
Thank you, Zach. Wow.
So I don't know if this question could be answered. Or if this is more of a, anyway, we've talked about different aspects. I mean, Joe brought something up, the applicant's attorney brought something up about how long these properties have been vacant. I tend to agree with what Joe and Zach are saying, but there's a part of me that's like, okay, are they just going to sit there vacant for another however many years? I don't know, you know, they're held in private citizens' hands. And so I've said many times, we can't dictate what happens with private property. But I just wish there were a way for those parcels to become what the uses around them are to, you know, drive economic development and jobs and I'm also sort of struggling with the idea that this is coming through on a loophole. Or it did at one point come through on a loophole that we never intended. As somebody who sat on the subcommittee that overhauled the zoning ordinance. Jamie, I think you can attest to this too. It was a huge project. We weren't going to get everything right the first time. And seeing that we had never allowed self-storage before, I don't ever really think there was an intention to leave the door open for that. Um, I guess none of that's a question. Sorry. I just, these are the things I'm struggling with when I, when I look at this. And I'm not sure that primarily the idea that if we did just, if we did approve this, are we just doing it because we're desperate because nobody's come in with what is a really a good fit for that parcel in the last twenty years or so? And I'm not sure I, I'm not sure how I feel about making decisions like that based on that type of thing, for lack of a better word. Um, yeah, again, not a question. I just, if anyone has anything to say to that, I'd be interested to hear other opinions about those points, but.
I don't think it's been available for twenty years.
Okay, well then that's the other thing. It's like I would like to know what the actual, how, how long it's actually been.
You have to look that up.
Oh, yeah, short and sweet. Um, in general, I'm kind of hesitant to let perfect be the enemy of the good um, in development and optics and everything. Um, but I think I've also been pretty thoroughly convinced by uh, Joe and Zach that this fails to, you know, reach a threshold of even good for the community. So I would, I would be hesitant to approve that. Especially for that too.
Jamie, I just have one more short general comment. So uh, Zach referenced the Economic Development Plan for the City of Dexter dated in twenty eighteen. That's a document I wasn't necessarily familiar with. If you can hear me. Okay, um, Zach referenced, uh, now I can hear myself. Zach referenced the twenty eighteen Economic Development Plan for the City of Dexter, which is a document I was not personally familiar with. And it appears to be the latest document available for that type of document dated in twenty eighteen. So I personally would appreciate an opportunity to discuss that among council and some capacity, um, as it's, you know, it definitely seems relevant to decisions that we're making and is six years old.
Okay. Ryan?
Sure.
Uh, to address some of your concerns, Joe. Um, I guess where do I start? So worst case scenario, as you're alluding to, let's say I, I hate to say this, I think, but I think it, 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 uh, falls. They're probably the most easily, you know, uh, deconstructible building we could put out. So as far as revitalization, reuse, repurpose, uh, it would be very easy for that to be rebuilt into a different use. As far as um, utilities and services go, uh, as you mentioned there, Zach. Uh, we've got a water main that we're going to be from console property, you have sewer right there in the front. There isn't really uh, um, a shortcoming there or shortfall. All utilities are going to be there. So um, I don't see how that's going to be an issue. Now, there's a few other points I want to make. We're proposing a little over forty thousand square feet. Looking at about two million dollars worth of buildings. No other, you know, figure there, just two million dollars in buildings, just for self-storage. That's something that's quantifiable in tax. As far as supply goes, as you mentioned, there is zero supply in a three-mile radius. So this is not a flip side. This is where the positive or is no supply for the city. They're driving to other municipalities and supporting their business. Right, and bringing businesses. It's going to serve the city, uh, residents. So without any supply, there is still demand and uh, a rule of thumb is uh, seven square feet per resident. There's about nine thousand residents in the City of Dexter. But in the average, the man in the city, about sixty-three thousand square. We're underserved still at forty-six thousand. Furthermore, occupancy rate in the United States is about ninety-eight percent for this year. One of the highest of all. So there's a lot of stability here. Um, you did mention that people aren't moving. Yes, I understand that. But we're in a village setting. People have small garages, small basements, smaller houses, but they still need space and this is overlooked. So I just wanted to make those. Thank you.
Thank you. And just, just so you're aware, I think our population's just somewhere under five thousand at this point.
Listen.
I think our population is just under five thousand at this point.
Sorry.
It's okay. Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, no problem.
Your, your zoning ordinance today on page ten twelve prohibits, in, in the list of non-residential uses under the industrial use classification, it says that self-storage are allowed as a special land use. That's amendment that went through after the zoning ordinance rewrite. When you get down to office, uh, office and retail and service uses, self-storage is still listed as a permitted use as a matter of right in the RD district. Special land use to fit upons the residential that continues to be in ordinance today. It may not have been picked up in the amendment process, uh, but it, but it comes back to this. The ordinance was enacted that allowed this in the RD district, special land use. Page ten fourteen says permitted as a matter of right, but it was enacted. And the RD district that you have vacant land in is the business research park. The applicant went through the entire process following their enactment of that ordinance. Multiple reviews, planning commission visits. Planning commission recommended approval said it satisfied the goals and objectives, understanding it was a recommendation. But if sewer and water usage and taxable value are the criterion, then why did the city enact a special land use approval ordinance for the RD district? And, and that applies to all RD parcels, these are the only vacant ones that are usable and all industrial parcels. Because reuse of an industrial parcel involves the same sewage, water, usage, you know, the calculations under utilization I've heard. It involves the same, the same taxable value consideration. So what, what I, what I sense here is that, you know, unfortunately, what the city is saying is this lawful use is excluded from, from the city induction. This applicant worked hard for a year and a half. They respectfully asked that you approve this special land use, approved preliminary site plan, allow them to move to final site. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Um, Zach, just wanna remind everyone that a special land use is by definition, not a by right use. It is not a come and meet the setbacks and the parking and the shrubs and you get to do it. It is a use that may or may not play well with the surrounding area or with the community. And every municipality in Michigan that has zoning has special land uses where it's discretionary approval, where we need to be convinced that all of our criteria, not some of them, not one, not two, not most, but all of the criteria have been demonstrated as being satisfied. That's the question before us. Does it meet the, all of the criteria? Not, do we like the fellow? Do we think there's need for it? Does it meet the criteria?
Thank you.
Yes.
Apologize for
No, that's okay.
Lyingness. It's maybe nuanced. So, um, in light of the recent comments, so Michelle in our zoning ordinance, ten fourteen, under, you know, I clearly see where it says, this is ten twelve. Industrial use, uh, self-storage, special land use in both I one and RD. Subject, as Zach had mentioned, to the requirements for a special land use. Scroll down a bit, uh, ten thirteen, ten fourteen, or ten, is it still ten thirteen? Still technically ten thirteen. Office, retail, services, self-storage facilities, I one and RD permitted. Special land use if a budding or across the road from a resi- residential zoner use. What is the difference? What's, what's the self-storage facility that appears in ten thirteen of our zoning ordinance?
I would have to look it up. The, the best of my knowledge, it's been updated for each of the text amendments that have been down to the entire ordinance over this last year. I would have to go back to see where the
So this document is saying update as of March.
Has happened.
March eleventh. Um, so your recollection is that that would have been amended to be an S? In that, because it does appear twice in this table of uses, non-residential district use table.
But so the city council did adopt an amendment to the ordinance that required the self-storage, uh, facility to a special use. If it's still showing in a separate section, it's an oversight and just needs to be, um, removed because it was supposed to be removed.
So scripters here, codification here. So whenever adopt ordinances are adopted, they'll have language at the bottom that says any section of ordinance that is inconsistent with this shall be repealed. It happens a lot, but it's just weird stuff that Damon's found.
Okay, so I guess then I would just ask staff to look at that, that particular section. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the questions. Thank you for everybody's participation. I'm gonna call the vote. We're, um, we have a motion by Senator Farrow, second by Michelle's, um, that is recommending, uh, denial of the application. Sergeant, please call the vote.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Schlaaf?
Yes.
Sammy Faro?
Yes.
Hubbard? Yes. Kio?
Yes.
Some carries. Limited site plan and special land use plan have been denied. Appreciate, appreciate your participation and interest. Okay, moving on to M two, new business item M two is consideration of award of work to modify City Hall thirty-five fifteen Broad Street for public safety facilities. Cunningham limp by an amendment to their instruction manager contract. Page one ninety-seven of the packet. Would anyone like to make a motion to start the discussion? Joe?
Thank you. Move we approve your word for word, board of work, modify City Hall thirty-five fifteen Broad Street, public safety facilities, Cunningham limp, the amendment, the Cunningham limp's construction manager contract.
You wanna comment on whether the inclusion of the apparatus structures or rental or purchase as requested?
With the inclusion of the rent of the apparatus structure as a purchase.
Okay, thank you. So a motion made by Senator Farrow at the bottom of, which is the one in the packet at the bottom, page one ninety-seven. Toward the work with the inclusion of the purchase options for the apparatus structure. Is there a second? I'll second, second by Schlaaf. Okay. Turn this over to you, Justin. Is that maybe that's?
Yeah. Thank you. Um, this is the next step in, um, moving forward to whole city facilities. Um, the committee along with, uh, staff and I hope that Cunningham limp have, um, been through, uh, a number of iterations, um, quite a bit of analysis and, um, review of the, the plans. Um, the, the work as proposed was put out to bed and, um, we, we handled it in a fashion where the, the, the Cunningham limp. Um, they took all bids, um, equalized them, um, as we was with a, um, uh, road project in, uh, some similar fashion. Um, they provided bid tabs for each section of the work uh, along with the recommendation for, um, their recommended subcontractor. Um, the, the idea is that the subcontractor will, um, enter into a contract with Cunningham limp and then the city hires Cunningham limp to, uh, form the work and, and manage the work. Um, I'd invite our folks from Cunningham limp, if anybody wants to come up and, and talk or present. Uh, so, uh, Lyndon is, is coming up.
Good evening.
Good evening. Wel- welcome.
I'm the council. Thank you very much. Uh, Lyndon E. Beza, uh, chief operating officer with Cunningham limp.
Oh, thank you. Uh, yeah, so, uh, I'm here tonight with, uh, Scott Wheeler. He's our chief estimator. Answer any questions you may have. Um, I'm sure the, uh, GMP amendment has been attached, uh, or included in all your packets. A couple, couple notes, um, uh, for all work related to three, five, one, five Broad Street, um, the, it was received on May twenty-ninth, uh, leveled internally uh, with recommendations. Uh, the GMP amount, uh, came within the budget range that was presented on May twenty-first, uh, to council. Uh, which is a great thing. Uh, the temporary apparatus, uh, base were provided as an allowance, both options. Uh, with direction, uh, previously from council, we ended up receiving additional bids for a purchase in, uh, in, as well as rental. They have credit space. Those have been leveled as well. Right now, they're included as allowances in your packet. Uh, we did finish leveling those bids and I wanted to provide uh, that additional range or budget range, uh, to help make decisions tonight with council. Uh, so they're, they're listed as an allowance. Uh, however, we have more of a finite range or, or budget based off of those coming in. And Justin, we're supposed to provide you something. We're trying to provide you some before the meeting. Uh, we said later this week, but I did want to provide a couple of price ranges for you. So the rental option, uh, came in at two hundred and ten to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, including sixteen months of rental fees. And then the second option for the purchase came in at the one hundred and sixty-five to one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar range. So it kind of fine tunes that allowance to get you closer to an actual number.
Alright, so the numbers in the packet have been updated then?
Uh, so they're still provided as an allowance, uh, which could possibly change, but these are, uh, going out to bid and actually getting leveled numbers. Uh, we had the data today, so I just wanted to provide counsel with that information.
Okay.
As well. Uh, so, uh, as I said, myself or Scott would be happy to answer any questions that counsel may have.
Uh, I have a couple. Can you talk about, uh, why you may or may not have chosen the low bidder on some things?
Uh, it's a great question. Uh, I can ask Scott come up with some more details. Uh, in general, uh, it was, uh, lowest qualified bidder. Uh, so what we take into account is not only price, but also a timeframe of availabilities, uh, how it impacts schedule uh, as well as, uh, understanding a scope and the building itself, so.
So, so part of the bid they submitted, schedule?
Uh, what, Scott library? Okay, so.
Uh, yes, when we put it out for bid, there was a schedule that was issued. But all the bidders understood the schedule. Given the couple, few days that we had between the time we had to submit for council uh, during that period of time spent on phone with the subcontractors. Those four trades where we did not recommend the little bidder, we were not assured from them or felt comfortable that they were gonna necessarily meet the schedule. And/or they had a thorough understanding of the building itself and didn't feel as though they were qualified enough for us frankly to take the risk on constant with what we're carrying for contingencies and our fee. And differences in those four trades equates to roughly thirteen thousand dollars if you took all four of them together.
Scott, what was the budget range? Remind me what it was back in May before we did the bidding?
My best get over there, but I think it's three fifty to three eighty what we told you in May.
So we're within the range then?
Yes, we're right, just far right in the very middle of it.
Thank you. It's nice to see a, uh, Dexter address on here. Also one of the businesses. CMR, one they recognize anyway. Does anybody have any other questions? Zach?
Yep, uh, I'm trying to find the language on here. Um, so my recollection and someone more versed in the sales purchasing policies that we need to, I believe, basically justify that it's worthwhile spending more money than the low bid on here, not just, um, get that on there. Uh, listed under temporary apparatus structure allowance, our options include electrical LP tank and heater, asphalt repairs and striping. Is the hundred and sixty-five to hundred and seventy-five all in for the installation of the facility with turnkey? They come in and it's assembled and they can back the truck in.
That is part of the, uh, more detailed leveling sheet and summary that we provide to you hopefully tomorrow uh, that we can, uh, Justin can distribute to you. Of that hundred and sixty-five to hundred and seventy-five, roughly a hundred and twenty thousand of that is to purchase direct and then later dismantle the, the unit. Balance of it, roughly thirty thousand dollars is supporting trades for electrical heater out there. Allowance for some asphalt repairs where we make for the building after it's taken down. Uh, the LP tank and the heater and some electrical wiring uh, from the panel that we provide out there to the operator, the overhead door operator, lights and things of that nature, those final terminations. Then also the value does include our markup fees.
Alright, uh, this question, I suppose, is more generally for the committee. Uh, although architect and, and folks who know can speak to this. Why are we choosing to disassemble the mill equipment and place it in a room that will not be visible to the public? Instead of move it somewhere else that presumably wouldn't require dismantling a door and repairing a wall?
So, um, the original intent was to take it and put it kind of in the middle of the staircase, um, where it, it might still be visible. Um, but on further valuation, it's not gonna fit. So we, we looked at other locations and I mean, the, the, the further you get and where something's going to be, um, the, the goal is to be within the building. Um, and there didn't seem to be a lot of good options in public locations.
So we're, we're spending twenty-five thousand dollars to move something to a spot where the public won't see it. And it's gonna reduce the office space. Is that a fair characterization?
Uh, not necessarily reduce the office space, the, the, um, park conference room. Once it is turned back, once it is converted back into, uh, goes from temporary sheriff, temporary fire to permanent sheriff. Um, the city would remain access to that conference room and be able to use it for conference purposes. Um, they just put it in a location in that room where we would still have full use of that.
I guess I don't understand that the layout was, because my understanding is that that's, we'd have to go through the sheriff substation to get to that. Um, but I'm okay not understanding that. Why is the cabling for the IT equipment going outside? It seems like that would be if someone wanted to cause mischief, very easy target for them to mess with if it's outside versus inside the building. Anyone?
Did, did David, are you, are you listening?
Yes, it took me a minute to get off of mute there. Good evening, everyone. I'm, I'm not sure where that comment's coming from in terms of outside. It might be referencing it's outside of this contract amount or these contracts amount. Uh, but it's, yeah, gonna be interior to the construction of the building. It, but it will be in the soft costs, not in the hard construction bids. And I think maybe that's what the language of what you're reading might be referring to.
The, 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 the low voltage cabling is, is not, uh, included at conference.
Alright.
It's been carried in the soft cost, not in the hard cost.
As the city attorney reviewed the, the contract.
Uh, so the original contract, we, we went over very, very thoroughly.
But not this, what we're seeing.
That, 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 the, um, small apartments that are dating to.
Also, my right, just, just to add to that as well. So it, it is the same exact base contract that's been included for reference. Uh, and the amendment would be any of the exhibit drawings that are attached, uh, where they guaranteed maximum price. So that would be the
Yep, yep. It's not just you. I always ask when we're spending especially north of four hundred thousand dollars, has our attorney looked at it?
Absolutely.
Cause there's some potential things. If, if the justice department comes in and says, you guys have to put in an elevator, who's, who's holding that bag? Um, that's all. I'm done.
Jamie? I have a question regarding the temporary apparatus structure. So my last recollection was our conversation in April where, um, it said it, it has been suggested that the structure could be eliminated and DAFT could utilize the drive under bay for squad truck parking. So we included that as an alternate in the bid package. And now this is a meeting where we're deciding we're renting or purchasing or not doing it at all, right?
No, no, the, the inclusion of the temporary, the inclusion of the apparatus structure was asking a meeting before.
We decided we wanted that for sure. Anybody remember what? Okay, I'm trying to find that. Um, just because it said that DAFT could utilize the drive under bay, we, the chief is a non. Did they just decide that was not ideal anymore?
I think, Jamie, I, yeah, I think that down lower level bay is not. Have you been down there? I mean, I mean, it's a quite a steep ramp out. I mean, to make a speedy exit out
Right.
in a winter condition or if we're in a winter month or, I, I think that's a I think we're much better off having the apparatus at surface level.
Squad truck doesn't carry firefighting equipment.
I was just trying to trace, trace the steps back.
So, so
That's what I recall.
Apparatus structure would, would not fit in, in the, in the ground. It would be more for squad and, um, you know, the R T D or G.
Uh, and then I guess I just wanted to share because I often do pass on comments to hear from residents, not necessarily for the sake of advancing a discussion about those comments, but just because I relate to the resident, I will be sure to share that with council. Um, but I'm welcome any discussion, I guess. Uh, so this person reached out and thought, didn't realize this was gonna be the permanent location for the police station, just thought that was a really bad idea, one way in, one way out. Residential streets nearby, slow speeds, um, and then also indicating, uh, an opinion that having the police at city hall might change the feel of city hall. Anyway, so I just said I will pass those on.
Thank you for sharing those. So when, when you, I'm not sure I'm, I'm aware of what's involved in relocating the mill equipment. But, but I mean, is it, is there another place in the building? Has anyone thought of that?
We, I mean, we, we walked building several times trying to look at where, where it could be relocated. Look at where we're where it could be relocated. And we're well doing. Good idea. If if anybody has a. You know.
How big is it? I mean, would it fit in our potential welcome center? Or is that it's like just a gigantic structure? I keep feeling.
It's it's tall, so it's.
It's almost a second story.
Yeah, so 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 it's it's. The 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 piece of flexi glass on top of it that serves as a floor for the second floor.
Dan? What about the Dexter Museum?
Bless you.
Thanks.
I don't know. What's that? Okay, anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Then you buy your.
Roughly nine feet tall, a hundred and eight inches.
Yeah.
Nine nine makes more sense to me. Nine makes more sense.
And in terms of moving it. You asked about the door. It's given what we're going to have to. Rig it with roll it and even the width of it in of itself. It's not going to go through a three foot door, so to leave that area at all. Going to have to. Within this building goes through a single door, we'll have to. Remove and replace the frame and. The framing in and around the media door.
We could send it to the Germans.
I said, they're sitting.
That was a good one, Zach.
There he is. There we go.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve. Which includes the purchase and inclusion. Of the apparatus storage facility. Any further discussion on that? Please call a vote to approve.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Hubbard? Griffin? No. Michelle's? Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Here's. Thought we had you guys. I'm sure we're on that one. New business item M three. For some extension of road closure for bicentennial event on Sunday, June twenty-third by six hours.
Would we approve the extension of the rose? Road closure by until Sunday? June?
Twenty-third at six o'clock. Very good.
I'll second.
Second by Hubbard. Any discussion or questions?
Just I'm guessing residents have been notified or will be notified.
So so we we sent out a letter. That could have been last year shortly either festivities or here shortly. The the letter did did include that the essential should open at noon. But all of the other. Road closure related. Product included in water would remain.
Say that last word again, all the other.
So like 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 the books that we notified here brought to draw up the loader, that that would remain correct.
Got it. So would you renotice that just those three people somehow?
Yeah, so so we can we can send out an update in the matter to the most near central street that it would be.
Any further discussion? Hey, please call the vote.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. New business item M four, which was K four poll from the consent agenda. Zach, would you like to make the motion?
No, I just have questions. You know me.
I know, I'm just trying to keep the pattern. Would anybody else like to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to request funding through transportation economic development fund category B from assuming that's the right.
Hey, is there support? A second? A second. Second by Schlaf, thanks, Dan. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Zach, you asked if it be pulled off for questions?
My question for staff several places in here, it references Dexter crossing subdivisions. My understanding is that they're actually site condominium, not a subdivision. And we're submitting that this is the state, it ought to be precise.
Yeah, let's.
They they are site condominiums, then they're from. Page one hundred of the packet. We we the resolution references Dexter crossing as subdivisions. My recollection is that they're site condominiums. Okay, I know it sounds like a small nerdy thing, but they're born of completely different enabling legislation and they're very different. They look the same, but they're very different beasts. So I guess I would move that. Or offer friendly that instead of referencing it as subdivisions as site condominiums.
Agreed.
Agreed. Okay. Any other questions? Please call a vote to approve the amendment for the motion.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Motion carries, that concludes our new business. We're down in not arranged participation. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak tonight or not? Welcome, Mr. Tell.
Retail three five three nine Hudson Street. City Dexter. Number one. Thanks for turning down the proposal in the industrial park. Somebody's worked in the industrial park for six years now. I was taking a bath in the dance school was allowed to go in there. My reasoning for that is because. The parking of the trucks was at certain times of the day when they pick up and drop off. I have eighty thousand pound trucks coming in there as to my buildings. There's a number of other trucks going to the other zone. I think we started on that flip it's local when we allow brewery in there. And then, of course, that was. Armed Europe. And then when the I was a little surprised when the dance school went in there. But that building was already built, so their. Their utilities are going to be what they are. I had a major concern about the. Self-storage going there because for some reason that Joe mentioned. And some personal reasons, you know, I didn't, I don't think we're getting. The revenue return on what we expended on there. For what was expected on there. There was a certain guideline, you do this, this returns this, this is the basis for doing it. I understand there was. What do they call that special land use? I guess, but. Also, the planning, what was the manager plan was kept beyond reference, manager plan isn't. An ordinance that isn't the law. But can be useful for providing direction. The council that I was on before is used at very same argument. So it's a flexible argument. Not the law or it's the intent. Number two. How many people are up for election this year? And can you raise your hand? Number three. Have you hired some new staff at the city?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I had a few phone calls today, so I am going to be talking to our new. Zoning administrator assistant tomorrow. Apparently my yard is unaccounted. So I'm hoping it's not in regards to the front. Up front. If it's in regards to what's out back along the alley. That's fine, but that's hardly. Seeable from the front. Front isn't that long, so I'll be interested to see what the pictures are. I'm going to make it a point to come in nice and early to around here because I want to see what's. Well, I'm getting letters. All kinds of shit. I don't like letters coming to me. I don't like people knocking on the door. I don't like people telling me what to do. Also, let's see. I think that was it. Oh, but I really do want to thank you for your turning down that. Thing in the industrial park. I think that, you know, six acres. That's a very viable site or something else. You know, it's a shame somebody bought it and had it done. Free country, I don't know. Surprised they might have purchased it without. Going through the motions of seeing what's going to be allowed. Land commission. Said it was okay, but they're recommending body. You're the council, you're the one that's going to have to answer, you're the one to answer a little. What that property is going to be like in ten years from now. If it's vacant. Oh, well, you know, we didn't get our two cents on a dollar like we should have. But somebody's going to come along. We've always said that. I understand it's been vacant. What, forty, forty years? So. Everything is going to turn around. This place is very desirable. The rents and the. Property values up here are unbelievable. I'm solicited for my house at least once a week. And it ain't decorated a house, you know, along along.
I just like Mr. Tell to be able to clarify, he's not solicited from his house, he's elicited for sale. They're they're two very different thing.
A lot.
As am I, as am I, and Zach, you probably are too.
Real estate people call me, email, you know. I had a business problem. So you guys seem to be doing pretty good. Didn't know this guy calling and I don't know this girl, Jillian. But I look forward to some more meetings that may run. I'm not sure. Getting pretty old. Don't have a lot of patience. Working a lot, tired all the time. Sometimes you do their fun, you know. Then I just got to be a lawyer. So thank you very much.
Good to see you. Thanks for coming. Is there anyone else in the audience or online that would like to speak under that range? Hey. We will start with council cabinets. Owen, would you like to lead us, please?
Sure. Excited for the bicentennial among kids my age that I know there's been some chatter about it. Hopefully that that bodes well for the event. And I'm excited to, you know, see the fruits of our labor. And happy Friday.
Joe?
Um, I wanted to. Note, sometimes. Park parks does not get a lot of funding, but we actually. I remember from the discussions at one point in time, we were talking about. Are we going to put money toward Mill Creek Park or are we gonna? Do the fire station? That was. And twelve. Five more years, whenever we did Mill Creek. Say it was a significant investment would be an understatement. There was a very big. Commitment and required a lot of funds from the city. It was all with it, but. Yeah. Thank you. You're welcome.
I'm gonna echo. Happy Pride Month. Without mine. This is the first time I've ever worn a rainbow shirt in public. Those of you who know me know that it is not me. To do this or to be vocal about. My personal life in this capacity. But I'm forty-three years old and I think I've reached the point where it's like, I don't give a crap what people think anymore and I'm tired of being afraid. And we may not be having a pride celebration this year. You know, it's been previously organized by high school students who. Are probably getting busy trying to graduate. Doesn't mean we don't need one. I know there's a lot of people on the internet. Who like to say, why don't we have a straight? Pride month and why do we need pride? And you know, it was only fifty-five years ago. That the events that. Started pride. Were happened, the Stonewall riots, and they were in response to. LGBT, you know, the alphabet mafia, if you will, they're. Mining their own business in their own private spaces and being raided by the police and. That particular thing may not be happening anymore, but there's plenty of hate out there still. I see it on the internet all the time. It's just, it it the fact of the matter is. I don't see why there's an argument of whether we need it or not. If we want a month. To be happy about who we are. Why should you care? And that's sort of like, I'm I'm going to say that stuff now. And I know that when I sort of half came out in in this. Body a couple of years ago, I was scared shitless. Done, I'm done. So. If anybody has any questions about my experience growing up closeted, religious, hating myself and why it's taken me this long to be this vocal. Ask me. If anyone has any other questions about history, ask me. I mean, if I don't know. I'll find someone who does, but don't be afraid of people who are different than you. Just, we're just mining our own damn business.
Thank you. Zach?
I will explain my no vote on consent agenda. It was related to the seal coating. First element was. Anyone remember Van Halen and they had the rider that they said they didn't want any of the brown M and M's in the bowl? That was because they had a really complex stage setup with a bunch of heavy lights hanging over them and they wanted to make sure that the crew was doing it, were reading all the instructions how to install. And so that was their little test to see are they actually reading these minute instructions? And they knew if there are a bunch of brown M and M's in there. Not to trust the lighting rig. The seal coating bid still references our old address. They haven't updated it, so I'm always cranky when that happens. The other reason why, though, is that I think we are significantly underspending. The seal coating in front of my house, it's only been sealed coated once in the ten years since it's repaved. Is already cracked and it's already got vegetation going in the middle of it, which is very contrary to the goal of. Maintaining good roads in good conditions. The other thing that I'll comment is our Dexter's beginning was someone else's end. I am a little saddened that there's no recognition of. The native tribes that occupied this area or incorporation that is part of this, not not a big deal. We don't need to everyone bow our heads and and. Do a pow wow at the beginning, but that would have been something nice to include and something nice to look going forward. Finally, for those of you who've driven on Dover Street, you know that my house has a bunch of flags on it. I do have a rainbow flag, but it doesn't have the triangles on it. I'm not getting the triangle one, not because I'm hating on the people in the triangle, but because I'm cheap. I've got it. My sister gave it to me, so. I actually have received a comment that I had the wrong flag of one year.
It's okay, Zach. There are memes going around that you're representing the OGs.
I do have straight skis that are over two hundred centimeters long, so I guess I'm in the OG camp then. That's it.
Thank you, Zach. Jamie?
Nothing, thanks.
Dan?
No, thank you.
Okay, does anybody have anything? In addition to what's listed here as proposed agenda items for future meetings? Zach?
Yes, planting trees and sanitary sewer easements. If that is something that is absolutely barring folks from putting trees in places where we've historically had trees, we need to talk about it. Because most tree species are compatible with sewer underneath them. Not all trees, you don't want to put a deep taproot tree on there. You don't want to put it next to control structure. But when you start keeping them completely away from those sewer lines, return the right way, you get really weird urban spaces.
Can that be part of the tree management cap topic? Potentially? Okay.
Just what? Yeah, could I just add some some sort of review of this economic development plan or some discussion of? That, I mean, if we, I know we have this economic development council and it looks like they need one year. Curious to know more about that.
Okay, we have two closed sessions proposed. Sure, right?
Did you guys have your meeting about redevelopment and broad speed?
That's tomorrow. Okay. Thanks for letting us know. You're still welcome to submit your comments by email if you'd like.
Is it going to be recorded?
I don't know.
The closed session.
It's at the library, I'm sure.
I'm just asking on behalf of someone who can't be there tomorrow to see if there would be a way for him to review it later.
Do you want to reverse these?
No. Can I ask if they have a real quick? My youngest daughter was in an accident. Can I go use my phone for five minutes?
Yes, absolutely. They'll join us in close session. Okay, we have a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation in accordance with MCL fifteen dot two six eight, section eight E. Somebody willing to make that motion? And we need to be specific about who's allowed to come in.
I will make that motion.
Okay. Okay. So that allowing the.
Allowing.
Allowing non-council members to remain city manager, assistant to city manager, treasurer, finance director, city attorney.
In the back, okay, it's in the back of the. Okay, yes, I will move that we enter closed session to discuss items Q and R on the agenda and.
We're doing Q. We're doing. Oh, Q.
Just Q? Or we're doing more of stuff?
One of them, okay.
Okay, sorry. I move that we enter closed session to discuss item Q on the agenda and that we allow non-council members. To remain in attendance, including it just the the city manager, the city attorney, and the recording secretary.
The ones that are listed there, city manager, assistant to city manager, treasurer, finance director, assessor, the item Q, on item Q.
Oh, boy, someone else do that.
I I move that we enter into closed session for the purposes of discussing pending litigation relating to Dexter Wellness Center Tax Tribunal. Tribunal in accordance with MCL fifteen point two six eight, section eight E, allowing the following non-council members to remain in attendance, city manager, assistant to the city manager, treasurer, finance director, assessor, city attorney, and recording secretary.
I second that.
Thank you. Motion by Griffin, second by Hubbard. Okay. Um, we're we're gonna vote to go into closed session, and then you can turn off the the. Okay. So please call the vote to go into closed session.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes.
And then should I just count Schlaf as absent for now?
Correct, yep. Okay, so we're in closed session. All right, let's invite um Mel Mustovitz in, please.
I'm gonna use the restroom.
Yeah, no problem, Jamie. Funny, it's funny to have to send one attorney out in the hall while we do a closed session.
Yeah. Except for.
How was the last good? Was the last good?
Yeah.
I did too at some point in time.
Amazing.
Great.
Absolutely.
Glad you had it.
Amazing, and everything I told you to be is not one.
That's great. That's great to hear.
My son, he had like a real professional camera, and so he's got some really good ones. We still aren't editing, but.
Hello there. Okay, we are waiting for Justin to say.
And Jamie.
And Jamie.
Four. Who currently are really not good. Two, and then I'm going to one on Thursday. And then the following weekend.
Okay, so just just so we're giving the staff the right direction here. We need a motion, have come, having come out of closed session, we need a motion to instruct staff to proceed as discussed in closed session.
I'll move to direct staff to proceed as discussed in closed session.
And I'll second.
Motion by Griffin, second by Hubbard. Please call the vote to approve that.
Griffin?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Okay, Justin, we just voted to give you direction to proceed as discussed in closed session with regard to the. Pending litigation that was discussed. So. Now we're still in open session. We need another motion to go into closed session to review information records subject to attorney-client privilege. Someone could read that motion on page two thirty-nine.
I'll move to enter into closed session for the purposes of reviewing information or records subject to attorney-client privilege relating to retiree healthcare in accordance with MCL fifteen two six eight, section eight H. Allowing the following non-council members to remain in attendance, city manager, city attorney, and recording secretary. And do we need mention of?
It sounds.
And assistant to city manager.
Yeah, that's a gentleman leaving the D. I can, I can manage the.
Do you need to mention the gentleman at the podium, or is that a given? Because it just is the following.
In this case.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You're doing great.
Don't look at all like.
You're doing great.
Yeah. I I have that same question. Sorry, sir.
That's what was awkward about the last one, is we sent the city attorney out in the different city attorney. Okay.
I'll second.
So, motion by, thank you for reading that. Griffin second by Hubbard to go in at nine fifty-one. Please call the vote to go in.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Okay, we're in close. Yeah, but not this later.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Not today.
Nikki D's for today.
Cause no.
Thank you, Val.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're back in open session. Uh, we concluded both of our closed sessions, and the only thing remaining on the agenda is adjournments. Is there a motion to adjourn? To move. Where'd my son from? Second. Second by Schlaf and Hall of Fever?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody have a good evening? And good week. I have a, and happy birthday. The story to share, or what you'd like to hear about my daughter.
Is she okay?
Is she okay? She's fine.
Are we still recording?
Yeah, her. Oh, I thought we're done.
She's fine, I appreciate that.
Did she miss the first two deer and she got hit by the?